Okay, we're going to call to the meeting to order at six o'clock. Alyssa, present. Matt.
Here.
James.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
James is last here.
Last here.
And Carl is here. Let's stand for the pledge. All right, this is the first, this meeting is for the Rassell School Board in public for the purpose of conducting school district business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment as indicated on the agenda. Notice of this public meeting was given as required by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-four, one through four, by being posted at the Community First Bank, the Rassell Public Library, the Rassell Post Office, the Rassell District Office, the Rassell School Website, and with W D U X, W S P T, and W S A W. Consider approval of agenda additions and revisions. Okay, James, is there a second?
One second.
Okay. All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda and additions and revisions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion is carried. Okay, then we can skip over. Okay, communication, district administrator report.
Good evening, Gordon, everybody that is in attendance and everybody viewing online, just want to wish everybody happy Easter. Kind of a long weekend, if you will, for our staff because obviously no school tomorrow. And then Monday we come back to an in-service day, which is a little bit less stress because obviously kids aren't here as well. So it's kind of a, a unique time of the year. And everybody knows after this, it's just a sprint to the end because once we hit May and hopefully we get some better weather at some point in time, it's kind of a sprint to the end. So. First thing on the agenda there is new board member meeting. We've communicated with Angela, we're going to attend in Marathon that night. So we'll be up there with the new board member meeting. Chris attended last year to just meet with other people that are also new to the area, get to put a face with the name. And then that starts that collegial process with other boards around the area. So then we go to other meetings, potentially, we've attended the fall workshop. If you go to the conference down in Milwaukee, you see these people over and over again, you start to develop relationship. And it's kind of nice to then have a face with the name from another school district and say, hey, what's going on in your school district? This is what we're facing. Have you felt, have you guys faced that? Like, what do you do and how do you, how do you work through it? So that kind of helps. We're going to do more about the referendum recap later on in the regular agenda, more of a discussion. I don't think there's any decision to make, but we'll talk about that. I do regretfully inform the board that we did have a bit of a forwarding, forward testing staff who, there was one section of the test and one section of the, the practice of the test that allowed a calculator that was not supposed to be used. So basically what we had to do is self-report and D P I has informed us that those tests for fourteen students will be invalidated for that specific section. So that is, that is on us and as admin team, we are adjusting how we remind and educate people on how they're supposed to practice that test. So we did send letters home informing those parents and if they need more information, they could definitely call us to understand more about what that means. It, it shouldn't affect, again, forward testing is a gauge. It's supposed to be, it's not supposed to be what everybody uses it for, which is compare our school versus another school versus another school. It's really supposed to be a self-evaluation tool for each school district to say, okay, this is where our kids are ranking in comparison with the average from the state. What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? So that way we can adjust and get closer or exceed the state average. That's really the purpose of it. Everybody under the sun uses as a rank and order file to say, oh, we're the best school district because we have the highest score. Does that, that's not necessarily true, but that's how everybody perceives that. So just informing the board that that did happen. And then my last reminder, tonight we do have a whole bunch of graduation diplomas, not only for Rassell High School, but we also have our R V A diplomas. And that's really clerk and president and principal and superintendent that have to sign those. So Shane and I can do those at any time, but because we're all here, just reminder, if we can stick around after the meeting to put the autographs on there, there's, obviously that's a little bit of a, of a time commitment, but we'll, we'll get through it. So that's all I have. Pending any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kizer?
I was there only fourteen kids that had, that had that.
Because when you break out in different set testing areas, that one area was affected with fourteen kids.
Those are the fourteen that took their calculators out to use them. Not everybody who was told they could did.
Because some kids didn't have one. So they, they were not invalidated. It was the ones that actually, oh, can you use this? Okay. No, they can't. So they're wrongfully informed.
All right, Mrs. Pine, elementary.
Um, so this is the time when I tell you about all of our testing. So this year we did pre-A C T and A C T and Forward, all on the same day for grades seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. And then the twelfth grade had special graduation activities, talked about, interviews with, like mock interviews, opportunity to have something a little bit different for them. So the majority of testing was completed for secondary all in one day. As of today, as of yesterday, only one student in our school has not completed the Forward exam. You don't know if Colton got a chance to do that last student today?
All done.
All done, so we should be all done. We did, unfortunately, there's quite a few R V A parents who opted out, which those negative, or those numbers will negatively impact us. We are, we get downgraded on our school report card if we have less than ninety-five percent participation in state testing. R V A students count as our students. So while we don't have opt-outs at our building, we have opt-outs at R V A. And I have not gotten a clear answer as to if it's ninety-five percent total or if it's ninety-five percent at a grade level. So, you know, is it, you know, we've got a hundred kids testing and, and five opted out total. That we've hit that and now we get marked down or if it's certainly, it's got to be at a grade level. We received an answer back from D P I on that. But we, you know, we talk with our R V A parents and ask them to participate. Forward exam is the typical exam that we do every year, grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and tenth grade at those social studies. Again, those are all state mandated, made it mandated tests and are done. The other state mandated test is the Ames Web for four K, five K, one, two, and three in literacy only. If you remember all the news headlines, Act Twenty is what that is about. That legally has to be done forty-five calendar days before our last day of school, which was today. And as of today, all of those students in those grades have been on the Ames literacy components that are required by law. So we are done with required testing. We have our own internal testing that we do for Ames mathematics in the younger grades and math in grades four through eight that will take place. Ames, they can do at any point now, but math is the beginning of May. Any questions on testing?
Mary, do you know how many R V A students we have in our district?
Eleven right now. Eleven or twelve.
Eleven or twelve. So all of them opt out?
No.
No, not all of them, just?
A lot of them.
A lot of them, okay.
I think we have three come and test.
Okay. And did we have students here in the building opt out?
Not this year.
Not this year, okay.
We have in the past, but not this year. In the past, the families that have opted out, we talked to them about why they might not want to opt out. And then they were like, okay, we'll give them out. So.
Okay, just curious to know, I guess I could ask you.
We had some students that they like alternate tests.
Okay.
But they, that's, that's what kind of stuff.
It doesn't. Yeah, the D L M is the other state required, and that's an alternate assessment.
Okay.
For students with significant disability. And that counts as tested because they do their assessment in, at the same timeframe level the other tests are given.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Mr. Larson.
I've got a handful of things to share with you. Number one, a student co-curricular achievement. Michael Bassett achieved gold at state in forensics. He actually replicated a piece of one of his favorite podcasts and just a big shout out to him. The, the coach, his father, Mr. Panter, the work that he's done. They are now looking into what nationals look like and whether or not they plan on attending. They, I was, state was in Madison where he achieved the goal of a perfect score. So that's a huge accomplishment for him in the forensics program. So try to keep you updated with what nationals looks like if they choose to. Student council field trip recap, our student council coordinators, Mr. Krieger, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Bosters. They, they schedule, they plan, they, they program for our student council approximately fifty kids to attend to attend a brewery game yesterday. So ended up leaving school around eight o'clock. We ended up doing background, I want to say six thirty-ish, but it was really neat. It was, it was history day down there and so they had a hundred and five-year-old, Ed McLavick. He's a hundred and five-year-old veteran and he's the second oldest known survivor of Pearl Harbor. He was throwing out the first pitch and they did a nice little tribute to him at the beginning of the game. And it was really neat to see our students because the vast majority of our students, number one, they're just exceptional when you take them outside the building and how they represent us. But number two, they know how to stand in the class. But then there were some other ones that are, oh, twenty-two thousand people are doing this and then they're just continuing to clap. So it was just a really neat event. In terms of the, the histories, they, they, in between each inning, they had different things for the students. One time they basically say this day in history for the Brewers and kind of had some stories. But then other innings they'd say, for example, Christian Yelich was born in nineteen ninety-one, right? Was this before or after Christian Yelich was born? And then they'd have different events or different, the internet comes out, like all those kinds of things, right? So it was just, it's kind of a little neat thing for those that were paying attention to it. But just to be at a game, I know it was a handful of students. It was the first time that they've ever been to American Family Field, so, so that was really neat. Speaking of field trips, there's a couple other that are actual items for you later on the agenda. First of all, our social studies team, Mr. Krieger, Mr. Wagister would really like to take our kids to high ground in Nielsville this year. It's a veteran war memorial and our school has gone there in the past, pre-COVID. But they'd like to go again and it's kind of neat. If you've ever been there, they've got like different eras of, I guess, veteran memorials. And you kind of get a little, you get a tour guide and they, they walk your, the kids around and they basically share a little bit about each memorial, but then also about each war or conflict or whatnot. So it's, it's really neat. It is over the fifty miles, obviously one way at seventy-eight, so we need board approval for that one. The other field trip that we're going on, the senior class has voted to go to the Mall of America for their senior class trip. And what I can share with you, it is an out-of-state trip. And we did talk with Mr. Beckland and our transportation is outstanding with field trips and accommodating students and what they do for them. But we are able to take students out of state with the individual that's driving the bus. Nineteen students signed up for the trip, which I think if you remember last year or years past, we haven't had quite the attendance that we hope on those. So for nineteen kids out of the class of middle forties, that's pretty neat, right? Now they are spending, you know, we talked about all the pros and cons of going to the Mall of America. But again, this could be the one time that kids go to the Mall of America, right? They're going to go to Nickelodeon Studios. They've all got passes for the Nickelodeon Studios. They get a little voucher for food if they want to. If they don't want to go to Nickelodeon Studios, which is amazing if you've never been there, they can check out the mall. They can go to the aquarium that they have there, they kind of get to choose their own adventure, if you will. But our senior advisors, that would be Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Krieger. You know, they're, they're volunteering to, to take them on this longer trip, if you will. But they'll get board approval, we'll need board approval for that one. I know the, the mall, they said opens at ten-thirty, so we're going to leave at six o'clock and stop some speed.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, get there at ten-thirty and then they'll be getting home late, right? Their, their plan is to, their wristbands, I think, are good for four and a half hours, something like that. So their plan would then be to, to be back there around seven-thirty, but all good plans, add a lot of bathroom breaks and stop that quick trip or something. And it's might be a little late here for them that night, but we'll need it for that. And then finally, I just want to give you a little update because in June, I plan on coming to you guys with some kind of a cellphone policy for next year, a, a school board approval policy. And we've taken quite a few steps as a staff. We've been talking about it at our staff meetings. We've got one coming up Monday, we'll talk about it there as well. But then we've also, we've been talking to students, right? Trying to educate students, just have open conversations with them during lunch or classes. Portage County actually shared a letter with us, Portage County Sheriff's Department endorsing a cellphone-free school for multiple reasons. Number one, they said in time of emergency, the thing we need kids to do is what they're trained to do, right? And we practice these things every single week, right? They said that kids calling into Portage County doesn't help either. If they're getting three hundred, four hundred phone calls, their, their phones are just getting flooded, right? And they also shared in the letter, and I'll bring that on June to share with you guys. But they shared that a lot of the things that they deal with in the eleven schools that they have in Portage County, a lot of the issues are with phones, right? And so if we could somehow be a cellphone-free school from bell to bell, where kids can bring them to school, right? But they don't bring them, you know, out in class. They don't have them out in the hallway, they don't have them out in the lunchroom, right? And I'll share more of that with you guys and we'll talk more as a staff on Monday. But the meeting as a, as a whole, I felt like parents were pretty supportive. We had seven parents show up. Ultimately, if those seven parents tell five people, right? That's thirty-five. I did have a phone call earlier in the day asking about it and that one was also very positive in terms of going in this direction. I think parents, as a parent, I struggle with it at home, right? And I think any help that we can get at school, right, would help me as a parent. So I, I think that most people are behind it. There, we sent out a parent survey and just over half of parents are behind it, right? Twenty-one responded, staff twenty-three out of twenty-three were behind it. So, you know, this is what we've been talking about, so. I don't know, we also had Briar Drexler from Portage County Health and Human Services. She was there and she just shared some internet usage things, right? Here's, if you're on the internet, if you're on your phones, here's some of the negative things that we're noticing from students socially, emotionally. Here's some kind of, the, the part I really enjoyed, she had some good conversation pieces that parents could share with, with their kids. What do you use your phone for? You know, what, what is your phone, how does it bring you joy, right? Are there ever some situations where individuals make you feel a little goofy on your phone, right? Because I think in the grand scheme of things, a lot of problems kids run into, they think they're alone. And if they talk to their parents, right, if they talk to adults, if we talk to, in some cases, right? We talk to Portage County, right, Police Department or Health and Human Services, they realize that we're all here to help them. But there's been some stories in the news, as you know, where people feel like they're, they're backed into a corner and ultimately they don't have the, the resources that they do, so. So I don't know if you have any questions about any of those trips or, or any of the things that our teachers are doing for students.
Anybody have any questions, concerns? Okay, thank you. All right, consented agenda. Mr. Kizer.
Well, as I put in the executive summary, at the time of that, we had no resignations. And this time of year is when we usually get that, a couple of field trips. And then this short recap and then we have now a couple of resignations. So Middle School Science, Megan Bosters, has submitted a resignation letter. And our secondary principal, Middle School High School Principal Shane Larson has also submitted his letter. The two field trips that we, that Mr. Larson has already presented, we received a, for a second year in a row, and maybe even more years in a row. Seems like Kalitos has been donating to our track enhancement fund, so this is a five hundred dollar limit. So we wanted to officially have the board recognize and approve that. We'll send, you know, the typical thank you letters and, and cards as well. And then we have our regular meeting minutes from last month's board meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consented agenda or does anybody have any concerns or questions about anything that's on the consented agenda?
I'll make it.
Okay, ma'am, is there a second?
One second.
Chris, a motion has been made in second to approve the consented agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carried. We'll make sure that, Shane, we hate to see you go, but we understand and Reagan's not here, is she? No.
If you don't mind, I just want to say thank you
Sure, go ahead.
to all of the students, right? The wonderful staff that we have here, the, the parents in our district, right? All of the school board members over the years, you've been amazing, so it wasn't easy. Thank you.
Just gotta do what's best for yourself and your family. Thank you for all the time you put in as a teacher and as administrator. Thank you very much. Okay, and when I can say more, because I'll cry. Okay, approval of bills with financial statements. Anybody have, Janice, did you get any questions about?
I did not receive any questions. And as I said last week when I sent out the agenda, these were up, were not yet updated due to the timing. And, and next month is going to be tight too because we have a turnaround meeting on the fifteenth, I believe. And so anytime that, if it's the twentieth, there's plenty of time, even when you get to nineteen, twenty, you know, that's fine. But if it's the fifteenth, a lot of our bills finish. Rachel was out built today, so I will do my best to answer the questions I'm going to have if there are any questions.
Did anybody have any questions or concerns? Pat, did you have any?
How come you're always asking me?
Because you're our treasurer.
You're the type. It's got to be one on every woman, you're that guy, okay? You watch it, so that's we, we got.
I don't mean to pick on you, but you are our treasurer and you usually catch these things that the rest of us don't get. Did we have? Chris, James, anything?
No.
Alyssa, okay, I didn't have anything. Okay, then I need a motion to approve the bills with financial statements. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, James, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, ma'am. Okay, motion has been made in second to approve the bills with financial statements. All those in favor say aye. All right, those opposed? Okay, no abstentions? Motion carried, thank you for your great service there, Matt. Okay, old business, I didn't mean to pick on him, I'm sorry. New business, discussion and possible decisions, Janice, on our health. Jake, was Jake from State Farm, right?
No, no, not State Farm. So I, I want to thank Anovia Health for meeting with us in person, so I think it was a little pretending because this is something that came to, came to our attention even last year. And we kind of investigated a little bit to say like, what, what does this mean? There's multiple providers, but the track record and the history that I've received from Anovia has been very highly regarded. The service aspect has been highly regarded. And I'm hoping you guys will explain a lot more about what it is. But in, in layman's term, because that's how I understand it, is really a, a same-day or next-day appointment for the primary or acute care. Meaning if I got a sinus infection and I, I could either go to my walk-in clinic or the emergency room and have a huge bill towards my deductible. There are employer plans that have the, lack of a better term, maybe the kind of supplemental healthcare that if we, we could take out an employer plan that would allow our people to go to Anovia Health for those sinus infections, for rashes, for those things that normally we would go to a walk-in clinic for. And it allows them to be same-day or next-day. And then through our per-member-per-month fee, there's no deductible, there's no experience on the insurance. So then the idea is if we can get a majority of our staff to utilize their clinic, then the renewal next year goes drastically down. The experience is not, right now it's hovering and, and experience is, if it's a hundred percent even, that means that all the money that we pay in premiums, the insurance company is paying that all out in claims. If we are positive and a hundred and five, that means that they're, the insurance company is losing money. If we're at ninety, that means that they've only paid out ninety percent of our, of our premiums. So if we could get that number to seventy with our insurance company by using a program like this, and it's roughly a little bit more than one family plan, that seems to be something that might interest us and that we might want to try. And with that little bit of an introduction, I will ask that if you want to come up here, I will call up, switch tabs here and go to the presentation and you guys can take it away.
While Jake is doing that, I'm, I'm Ken. I'm one of the founders of Anovia Health. And I thought it was appropriate as I, as I was listening to the reports, I, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Regala. I'm sure she had a, a real name, a real first name, but I only knew her as Ms. Regala. She was my principal, grade school principal. And I believe it was about nineteen seventy-eight when she said, called me into her office and I thought my world was going to end. And she said, Ken, I, I think you can be better. And I, I'm sure that today she's looking down and saying, good job. I'm a graduate of Rio High School, if anybody knows where Rio is, down, closer to Madison.
Oh.
And I'm positive, I can tell you that I graduated in the top thirty of my class. And uh, uh, I'm positive, I can tell you that I graduated in the top thirty of my class, uh, there was forty-two of us. I wasn't at the top of the class, and I know that, but I, I wasn't at the end either, but anyway.
Yes, um, so good evening, Board President Carla, rest of the board members, school district admin. Uh, my name's Jake Brain, Vice President of Operations with Anovia Health. Ken is from Rio, I am from Rip Lake, I'm sure you've heard of Rip Lake, very similar sized school, I believe, to Rochelle. And what I always remember as a big baseball player, and baseball school, Rochelle was always ranked higher than us, they always had really good programs, at least back then had a very good program. Oh, they still do. Um, so yes, uh, Mr. Kizer had reached out and we were talking direct primary care. Anovia Health is direct primary care, I don't know if anyone's ever heard that term before. Um, primarily supporting employer groups, really the difference between direct primary care, independent family practice, and family practice from a system-based healthcare center is that we have direct partnerships with employer groups, we eliminate the middlemen. So typically you go to a clinic and they're going to be billing your insurance, your insurance then says, I'm sure this sounds familiar, you know, our loss ratio is here, it needs to be here. The renewal rates were going to be twenty-five percent, I really fought for you, I got it down to twenty-two percent. We don't want to see twenty-two percent, right, so we're trying to figure out ways that we can control costs. When we cut out the middlemen in healthcare, it not only provides, you know, less overhead. Because when we think about, you know, back in my system days, uh, over ninety percent of our employees came from the health system at some point. And we all got to the point of thinking, you know, there's got to be a better way. Because when you talk to any providers and say, what's the worst part of your job, they say paperwork, insurance, hate having to deal with all the denials, having to fight for my patients, having that third party influence. Um, so when we remove those pieces, my old system days, we had prior off specialists, that's a position, right? We had rev cycle, that's a position, we had billing, we had denials, we had all of those positions who also had leads, supervisors, managers, directors, all the way through, which adds overhead, right? So we thought, how could we step away from this, Ken thought, Ken, our founder, step away from this and do it in a way that puts patients first? Let's providers do what they went to school to do, sit down, have time, diagnose, find the root cause of what's going on, rather than focusing on profits. Simply, that's the difference, right? Put patients first, profits will come into place with a fair price. When you focus on profits, we have shorter visit times, we have less access, I'm sure this sounds familiar. Primary care providers that you can't get in to see within a couple of months, um, urgent care visits, deductibles, everything keeps going up. So that's kind of our model, um, with Anovia is to cut out the middle piece, let the providers do what they went to school to do. We have physicians, we have APCs, NPs, PAs, we have RNs, we run lean, uh, we don't have a lot of extra fluff. Because in order to keep our price fair, we have to eliminate those pieces, right? Um, so uh, if you go down and actually, if you would click on Mr. Kizer, there is a short video, it will let you play, scroll up to the next slide. If you click on that, it should play, it's just a quick video on our. Oh, okay, that's okay, it's an Anovia experience, we'll send this out after and you can take a look at it, some of our providers speaking about the differences in quality, how they can practice in a different way, because they're not limited by all those third party influencers that I had mentioned. Um, so if you would, Mr. Kizer, scroll down to the next slide. So here's the map of our current clinic, so we are on our fourth year as an organization. I'm going to give a little background of myself, just so they can kind of help structure kind of where I, how I think about things differently based on my backgrounds. Um, so I've been in, I've only been with Anovia for about seven months, um, but I've been in the independent family practice space, this is my third year. Before that, I was a product of the system, just like I said, everyone else that works for Anovia was. I was Director of uh, Therapy Services with Aspiris, I, I went to Rip Lake, live in Bedford now, so I had the region, uh, the Northwest Region of Aspiris. Um, so over the four years, we now are going to be opening this, this fall, well, actually this month, we're going to be opening clinic number thirteen, between our near site and onsite clinics. Um, so we have, the near site clinics are all going to be the stars on there, those are standalone independent practices that have employer partners that are supporting us. They're supporting us through subscriptions per member per month, and then we work through the rest of the costs, which I'll talk later, to make it more affordable for folks. So clinic number thirteen is opening at the end of this month, this will give you an idea of how busy we are with our little admin team. And the end of August, uh, beginning of August, actually in July, we're going to be moving over to Menominee, uh, Wisconsin, Menominee on the other side of Eau Claire. Big reason for that is a partnership with the school district, um, as well as a couple of companies over there. So uh, we're going to fourteen clinics by the fall, and uh, it's a model that I think is going to continue growing. Uh, because people are seeing the quality, they're seeing better access, and frankly, they're being forced to think outside the box because their rates keep going up, right? And this is a solution to do that. Um, closest clinics here, uh, obviously going to be Stevens Point Clinic, uh, we do have a partnership Stevens Point School District, which I'll, I'll talk about a little bit later. And then Weston, I think it was about thirty minutes for us to get from Weston, but I was speeding a little bit, had a lot for gear, there's tons, tons of.
It's thirty minutes, what'd you say, man?
Yeah, just a question. Clintonville one I, I saw was proprietary to those specific businesses. We do have some employees here that live to our east, that might be closer, would they have access to that?
Absolutely, yeah, so really what that means, we had a group of, of organizations and clinic, the larger clinics that actually they own the, the clinic building. And we come in, we run the services for them, so we provide the healthcare, you know, to their employees. Um, we do have an agreement with them that any of our business partners at any other location can use that clinic, and that's the way it works in Anovia. Uh, if you live here, I get it, rural Wisconsin, right, everyone's traveling to get to work, um, if you're a partner of Anovia, you're a partner of all of Anovia, so you go to many of our clinics. Great question. You know, we have a difference, so um, Mr. Kizer did a great job of describing kind of what we do from the same day, following day access side, and that is a hundred percent the truth. We make sure that, you know, with our model, as I was saying, right, we can put people before profits, we know what we need from a subscription standpoint to keep our doors open. We schedule strategically to make sure a provider's not going to come in that morning and have a jam-packed day and not be able to get people in. So we do guarantee for acute illness, so acute illness, when I say that, I'm talking strep throat, ear infections, pink eyes, those UTIs, those types of things. We do guarantee same day uh, or following day access to, you know, if you call it three thirty and close at four, and we got a patient there, it's going to be tough to squeeze you in. Uh, but we will get you in the next day. Uh, but I'd like to add to it, Mr. Kizer was mentioning that we, we're, we're full-service primary care clinic. So while some people think, all right, it's great for acute onset illness, but we are also serving, we're that first call for healthcare for, boy, pushing thirty thousand patients and pushing ninety business partners throughout Wisconsin. We're that first call for healthcare for people for family practice primary care, so those annual exams, um, someone that's going to actually follow through with your care long-term. And uh.
So like chronic care management, like diabetes, hypertension, anything that you, you uh, would go to a, a doctor for, that's what we do.
Yep, yeah, so any service that you're going to find at any other clinic, you're going to find, you're going to find with us, right? Except specialists, we're not specialists, but what you'll find is any specialist that you see has to have a referral, right? And that referral always comes from their primary care doc. And rural Wisconsin, how you can reference Metford again, you know, that's a problem, because access to specialists is hard, right? And if you've got something going on, and you have to wait three months to see your primary care provider to get that referral, you're not going to get access to that specialist either. So um, access in this, not only state but country is something that's hurting more and more and more. Um, what I'm finding, what we all find within systems these days is, you know, we're shortening visit times, um, rushing people through because we want to feed those specialists. That's where the money is, if you look at economics of a healthcare system, primary care doesn't make a ton of money for these organizations, it's all specialists. Um, so we do have physician-led care teams, as I mentioned, APCs, physicians, so nurse practitioners, PAs. Every clinic that we have does have a lead physician, we believe in the highest level of care. Um, while we might have a PR, PA or NP there, full-time five days a week, and the physician there, one to two days a week, because they might be bouncing from that clinic to another clinic, they are available twenty-four seven for calls. Uh, what we typically see is that a nurse practitioner, PA in family practice can handle about seventy percent of the scope of a physician, just because physicians frankly have more training. Any of our referrals, that first referral comes from the NPPA, goes to our lead physician. Because our goal with savings is to keep care in-house if we can, while that NPRPA might not be as comfortable to have as much experience with managing anxiety or something that, that physician may. So we practice team-based care with that being said, um, really working together, rather than having this person, it's a team, right? We all work together to make sure we can get answers before referring out to a specialist. Unlimited visits, when we talk access, um, with the subscription, visits, procedures, all included, come in as often as you want. You don't have to worry about fee for service adding up. Uh, what we do from a tracking purpose is though, is we do code visits the same way that we would for the system does when they're billing insurance. We don't code the visits to bill you for them, because that's all included in the subscriptions, we code those visits so we can show you the ROI. So now I can say in a quarterly utilization report, you had this many nine-nine-two-one-one CBT codes, right? Or nine-nine-two-one-two, nine-nine-two-one-three, million of them. We can compare our price of what you paid with a subscription to what these visits would have cost with Aspiris, Marshfield, some of the systems around here. Because the Healthcare Transparency Act that passed in, I think, twenty-twenty forces them to share it, right? Um, so from an ROI standpoint, we do, we do code visits that way. Um, but we have a lot of different ways that we can provide care. Minimum visits can be thirty minutes, um, all the way up to an hour, compare that to the systems, when we're talking to providers, they're getting seven to nine minutes. And you come in with an issue, and you start talking about it, and if it's not a prevent, pre-vent visit, you get a surprise bill. And two, they either have to refer you out or push you out to come back, because they have three people waiting in the waiting room. Come into an Anovia clinic, I'll say eight times out of ten, and I say that with confidence, there will not be someone sitting in the waiting room. You come in, we check you in right away, because we schedule strategically, we give, we give a provider thirty minutes for strep throat, where you come in and say, my throat hurts. They look at it, see white spots, swabbing, it's positive, they're done in fifteen, right? So now they have fifteen minutes to choose the brace with you, or talk about your knee that hurts or whatever, and you're not going to be charged for that, because again, visits are included, procedures are included. Uh, we have face-to-face, we can do tele-video, uh, we can do text or email, say, primary care should be personal. We've all had the experience in the system, you message your provider, you get a response from a nurse, you can't hear back from that physician or NP. Not the way it is here, providers are the ones texting you back, because we give them time to do that, right? So in that fifteen minutes strep throat visit, those other fifteen minutes, they can be responding to text messages or whatever, it might be to renewal and meds, um, things that you don't necessarily have to come in for. Uh, with that being said, from an access standpoint, uh, while we're only open Monday through Friday, our physicians do take call, we're usually open eight to fours, our standard hours. And we do flex a little bit, depending on location, our physicians take call, uh, so we do have available visits at any time, twenty-four seven. Usually call is more for uh, someone on a weekend, if you're like, me and you have three little ones at home, hey, my kid loves, what's happening? Fell downstairs, locked their hat, are they going to be okay, or do I need to go in? You know, you call the lead physician that's on call, they ask you questions about, is this happening, is that happening? They'll either say, go in, yes, or, you know, let's get you in Monday morning, keep an eye for these types of symptoms. Just to put people's minds at ease, because, you know, depending on deductible plans, um, Metford, Wisconsin, they don't have an urgent care, right? So if I'm going in on a weekend, I'm going to an ER, and the ER for someone, my little one's ears hurting, it's going to be a thousand dollar visit, right? And if I have three thousand dollar deductible, I'm paying a thousand bucks, so I'd rather make that call and just make sure, hey, they're okay, this is what we can do, time when I'll help with their symptoms. Commitment to great care at a fair price, I mentioned our model, right? We figured out what do we need for a fair price that people can feel like they're winning from an organization standpoint, but savings. But all of our partners offer our services at no cost to their employees, employees come to us, it's a fraction of the price you're going to see in the sim, in the systems. This year's claims are next year's premiums, if we're not billing your insurance plan and ranking claims against, against that loss ratio that they keep saying is the reason why your plans go up, uh, it's a win for the organization too. Um, and that's just the beginning of, of where the savings are. Primary care is, this, you can save money, but the real savings come from, as I mentioned earlier, specialty referrals, which we'll touch on. Um, lab and imaging at the lowest rate, we contract with lab organizations and get them at wholesale price. We mark them up three point three percent, um, for the administration cost. And uh, we're getting lipid panels at twelve bucks, we're in lipid panel systems, a hundred and eighty-five dollars. So that's an example of where those savings are, uh, most of our companies, when we compare costs for visits, I've seen the lab visit savings be higher than the visit savings, because labs are marked up that much, it's, it's insane. Uh, so we do draw labs, uh, we spin labs, we have couriers that come and pick them up, we get the results the next day, we relay it to the patient. If we have a patient that's within the system, um, that's seeing primary care provider there, because they, if you're rare and you have someone that's been there ten years plus, have a great relationship with them, they can still order labs with Anovia, they order labs with Anovia, they get the results. The difference is now you're paying that twelve bucks for lipid panel with us rather than a hundred and eighty-five dollars. So depending on plan design, think outside the box and how we can get, you know, how people can get strategic with steering people to that way. Typically, it's money, it's copays, it's deductibles, it's all that stuff, uh, but we can talk more about it. As far as the contracts go, uh, we have a contract that locks in your price, that's the only reason. If you want out, you get out, it's a month-to-month contract. We have close to ninety business partners now, we've never lost a single client since we've been open four years ago. Um, and then I mentioned earlier the exercise, same day, following day visits for acute. Depending on the, you'll get in same day for a, for a physical too, which is just the craziest thing to hear, right? Because that never happens, it's not same day, it's usually within a week and maybe two in some of our really busy clinics.
Just clarify, uh, so going back to the thirty-six minute appointment, let's say, I think I've got an infected toenail, I've got psoriasis, I've got chronic headaches. I can talk about all that without being three office visits charged, correct?
Yeah, if I, if we're invited back, I'll bring a physician and they'll tell you some crazy stories, right? Because people hear that, they hold this, listen, well, let me tell you what's been going on, and I find you, because you're going to get charged for it elsewhere.
Well, it happened to me, I didn't ask for it, I, I, so, sorry. I have psoriasis, I called ahead to be, to get into dermatology, because this thing on my wrist was like funky looking, my father mom was going through some skin cancer things. It's like, hey, you need to go get that checked, so I called in, got the referral to dermatology, because I already had my, um, already, you know, it's, psoriasis is already in the his- history record. I go to my annual physical, I didn't ask for it, but my doctor says, hey, this is why I'm concerned, and pointed at my cheek, because there was a little mark. I didn't answer her, I didn't ask her, she pointed to that, it was a separate office visit, I'm like, you gotta be kidding. And I think, this is a conspiracy, a person me, I think they wanted to get the money for the referral, because I had already had the referral, but now I gotta make the, the office visit count, so I got double office visit, even though I didn't ask for it, I was so not happy.
Yeah, you're on the right track, and you, when you think about the why, it's, it's how these providers are paid. When you go to a system, providers are paid on production, right? So now at production, and trust me, I worked it, right? I thought, well, my staff are productive, they have, they have patients coming in all day long, how is this pace person who has this many patients, you know, the same amount of patients as this person, less productive than that person, when they're seeing the same amount of people. Product, productivity is not measured on how many people did you help, it's measured on how much money did you generate. So it's complexity of visits, it's the level that you're coding, that's how they get paid. So now you ask something, they're going to, they're going to code it up, because that's what they're incentivized to do. Our model, our providers get paid what they get paid, it's our job to go find clients, get patients to come in, it's their job to do what they went to school to do. It's sit down, help the person, make sure they're happy with their experience, they go back and tell their fellow employees, and they want to come in and use it too. So it's just a different business model, um, all providers want to help people, right? But if you have to provide for your family, you do what you have to do as well, so, as well as all those metrics that I was held to, that uh, I never heard referrals going for primary care, and if it wasn't coming to us in therapy, I had to figure out why, and we had to have meetings with them to try to get it to come to us. Because primary care, as I said, does not make a ton of money in systems, but it feeds those specialties, and that's where the money is, so they want to keep those referrals in house. This is a really good slide that demonstrates the difference with that being said. Um, so if we're looking at the topic, every clinic has patients coming in, that's where it starts. If you will notice, we have physician-led primary care teams, the referrals, there's going to be a lot less errors going out. Because if we have the highest level of care, and we give them time to figure out why this might be happening, we don't have to refer out nearly as much, nor are we incentivized to do that, we're not, we're not products of the system, primary care, we're not feeding anybody. Um, we're able to shop around, find value-based providers, tons and tons of stories about saving a boatload of money for specialty referrals, because we refer to MRIs, we go to Smart Scan, it's six hundred and fifty dollars for an MRI, compared to three to ten thousand dollars in the system for the same service. You walk in Smart Scan, they've got the same equipment, they've got the same radiology groups doing the reads, the difference is those facility charges, right? If you're in a hospital system, it's going to be marked up that much more. Now, at the bottom, the strategic uh, model, because we want to feed these specialists, let's take away the highest level of care, right? So now we're seeing more and more NPs, PAs practicing independently without having physician oversight, especially in rural areas. Very rare that I've seen that you have a physician in rural area tip, that's going to be an PPA, unless that physician's been in twenty years and is sponsored to stay there. Let's get lower level of care, let's give them less time so they can't dive into the why, and what do we get? We get more referrals, you come in with something on your hand, they say, well, it looks like this, I couldn't take all these labels, I could send them in for whatever, um, biopsies, but, you know what? I, I know I'm incentivized to send it to a specialist, they're going to know, I don't want to deal with it, they got three people waiting, let's get you out here, go to dermatologist. Um, same thing happens with anything, you know, for a guy can, a toe that, you know, needs an X-ray or whatever it might be, if you don't give them, them the time to look into things, they have to refer. That's the model, that's where the money is, right? Do you have anything to add on that, Ken?
Nope.
Um, does that make sense to everyone? I'm hoping it does, the difference, we give them time, we give them the highest level of care, we can keep things in-house longer, because frankly, we just can't, we have more time to do it.
I, I, so the only thing I will say is, they want to be clear that we never hold on things just to hold on to things. You're going to be referred if you need to be referred, that, and, and so it's going to be a medical judgment. So we just want to make sure, because sometimes people get a little scared saying, oh, you're just trying to deny us care, no, not at all. It, it's, it's, we're going to hold on to things that are appropriate to be held on to at the.
It's, it's truly a partnership, right? It's a partnership between us, it's a partnership between your insurance plan holder, it's a partnership between you and your employees. We want to make sure we're thinking strategically to find a value, value's not solely based on cost, right? But we also have to know what's within scope, what's not, and where we refer, how to refer. Some of our local partners, I was just thinking, as I was developing this around this area, so we do work with a number of school districts, um, as well as other municipalities in the area, uh, we have Bruce Lawso, a number of groups in Stevens Point. I will say, most of our planned partners are self. I will say, most of our plan partners are self-funded, when you're self-funded for your health plan, you have a lot more control, right? And you also take on a lot more risks, so you invest into something like this to make sure, one, we're providing value, but every referral comes from primary care. How can we refer strategically to get people to, one, have care that costs them literally nothing, really nothing, and save the organization a ton of money? We have a lot of other groups, Stevens Point School District is one, self, or fully insured, very similar to the school district here, that's saying. My renewal rates are way too high, we cannot sustain this, we're having to, we, we wanna stay competitive with our recruiting, we wanna offer tough wages. But if our renewal rates keep going up, we're spending money on health plans that, frankly, we don't even know how much we're spending or what, who's using it, because they don't share all the data. Um, use us to control costs, get those loss ratio, loss ratios down with a goal of lower premium increases next year. A lot of groups will use this as a step, uh, to going self-funding, sometimes it takes a couple of years, right? They'll say, fully insured, if I go self-funded, I don't change how I consume healthcare. I don't wanna look at things, because now I'm taking on all the risk, and if it's very expensive, it could bankrupt us, right? Um, they'll use this as an investment to start, let's try, let's try getting them into Anovia, let's drive utilization, let's get them comfortable, so when we do go self-funded direction. We already know they're going to be going to Anovia, and they can help control costs from there. So a couple of different ways you can look at it, we work both fully insured and self-funded clients. We have partners that are two people, literally, that pay for memberships for them and a significant other that run their own company. Uh, we have general public folks that pay for memberships, and we have companies up to twenty-one hundred lives that we're supporting, so, uh, all sizes can do it. Uh, there's a lot of different kind of philosophies on the why behind it. The results, I'm assuming, uh, and actually at the bottom here, we do have, uh, who this is, it's Gambler Johnson, Gambler Johnson's a partner, it's a really good plan, really good partner in Stevens Point. This is, to give you an idea of how far this can be taken, because they are like top-notch, I don't know if anyone else built player, their HR director there. But he has a handle on their health plan like they've never seen before, this, this is to give you an idea of how far it can be taken. There are a hundred and sixty-five lives, if you look at the top, this is their data, they gave it to us, they said that we could share it, and we did not touch it and give them any of the numbers. Um, they run it all themselves and compare. Twenty twenty-four savings across the board, primary care, all the way through specialties, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So that's seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that that organization was able to put back into their company for growth, that they wouldn't have been able to. If this would have been through the health plan, through a system, um, so they use us for primary care. Obviously, they have utilization of seventy, eighty percent, somewhere in there, seventy, eighty percent of their people are using Anovia, right? So let's buy in, this is again, as far as you can take it, they're doing a great job. Savings, they saw a hundred and sixty-five lives, and we compare the visit codes that I mentioned, we track, compared to systems, and primary care, the visits alone, seventy-six thousand dollars. Lab, seventy-two thousand dollars, as you'll notice, primary care can offer savings like I mentioned, but where are the true savings, it's specialties. So everything on the right here, physical therapy, behavioral health, imaging, surgical prescription, everything there had to have a referral. Those referrals came from Anovia, if those referrals came from Aspiris, and someone comes in that says, man, my leg's been kinda hurting, and they say they're gonna do an MRI. Nine times out of ten, we're really gonna refer, we're gonna refer with them, and you say, I wanna go elsewhere, you know, I'm really comfortable with our program, and we have good radiologists, it's easier for me to do it. You don't even have time to ask out the time, because it's in house so quick. Um, so, physical therapy, there's advanced PT around here, we have health in motion around here, do direct contracts with organizations, just like we do. Keep those claims out of the insurance plan, um, but, you know, this is, I also wanna mention, it's, this is a four-year progress here, right? So they've been working with us since we've been open, people don't, we don't want you to come in and say, change everything, because if we come in and say, change everything. Your employees say, what in the world, like, I don't even know who these people are, they're not gonna be receptive, it's, they're gonna be like, working against you. That step in the right direction is the place where every referral starts, primary care. Um, let them come in, start getting comfortable with utilization, then we can start looking at some of those other referral options for specialties. Uh, we had a meeting earlier, and I gave an example of, when I say specialties and the value of the differences here. We had a group in Medford, I had, that's, uh, it was a high school student, he was a football player. That had a, it was an knee injury, and I don't remember exactly, it was meniscal tear and something else, and I remember with the other side, it was like compartment syndrome or something. And, uh, in our neck of the woods, everyone goes to triple value orthopedics, especially athletes, it's a triple value orthopedics, they're a good group, that's who operates on all the athletes, that's where I wanna go. They said, I want Dr. Crowe, and I know Dr. Crowe works at Oakleaf, so let's look at what the costs are gonna be there. We looked at the costs were gonna be there, and, uh, to get Dr. Crowe. Or, we compared it to Cedar Crest Ambulatory Surgery Center, which is in Rice Lake, and what the costs were going to be. Dr. Crowe, the surgeon's cost, because you have a professional fee for the surgeon, you have a facility fee for the facility, compared to a hospital-based. Surgery center, ambulatory surgery center, Dr. Crowe's price was the same, right, it's like fifteen grand for him to do the surgery. When we compared the costs, it was sixty thousand dollars different, because of the two facilities. Same surgeon, but operating in a hospital setting compared to an ambulatory surgery center, sixty thousand dollars different. Now we look at the plan for that individual, that plan could, that individual could have gone to Oakleaf and said, I wanna see Dr. Crowe, I wanna see him here, they have a three thousand dollar deductible. That surgery's gonna cost that family three thousand bucks. Within plan design, they say, choose value, we have a value-based network, Cedar Crest Surgical Center's included in that. They went to Cedar Crest Surgical Center, and they didn't pay a penny for it, they got gas cards to go there, the significant other to help drive process. Uh, and they didn't pay a penny for that surgery, so now that person, that family had three thousand bucks back in their pocket. I'm a normal guy with little kids at home, three thousand bucks, a lot of money, and that organization saved sixty grand on that surgery to have a same surgeon in a different setting that they could put back into their company. That's, that's a really good success story, um, not everything is gonna be that much money, but it's one worth sharing in my opinion. Otherwise prescriptions.
So Langley County, um, they are, uh, probably the most innovative county. Uh, they incentivize their employees to, to make better choices in healthcare, and again, so this, this is, this is being done. And, uh, uh, these are the type of people we're partnering with, and we're your advocate on the healthcare side. And as Jake said, you don't have to do everything, you know, don't, we, we don't want you to leave tonight saying, oh my god, this is so complex, don't worry about it. We'll take one step at a time, as, as you guys are ready, and, uh, um, the best thing is, you're gonna get great care to start off. And then we'll, we'll work on all those other sophisticated things, uh, and, and the, one last thing I'm just gonna say about this chart. This doesn't even capture, so, my friend Matt here, um, if, if we get, uh, appropriately treat Matt. So he doesn't go to the specialists, because he doesn't really need to see them, that's not even captured in these numbers, so you could probably have. Uh, at least two times the savings from the, the people that, that didn't go to, uh, a specialist that didn't need to.
Yeah, so example would be like a mole, right, you come to our clinic, because you have a mole, that's just kinda looking funky, and you wanna have it taken off, take it off, you send it to pathology, comes back non benign. Great, right, we even have a specialty group that we work with that can consult with us, that's included in our price for you guys. Um, that would have been a dermatology specialty referral, right, if someone looks at that and says, oh, it looks kinda funky, I don't have time to take it off, we got three people waiting, you're gonna go to that specialist. A lot of different stories on how that happens, just because again, we give them time. Um, so I was only gonna add prescriptions, um, that's a huge opportunity for folks to. Having a pharmacy benefit manager that is doing pass-through costs, you're seeing the rebates, there's a lot of money that's captured there that people don't even realize. There are the rebates for drugs, you don't even know where they're going, there's ways to outsource chronic meds that can be mailed to you. If you're on chronic meds, you don't always need it right away, unless you're a big procrastinator, you can plan it out, have it mailed to you at a fraction of the price, right? So a lot of different ways you can manage costs, but you have to think outside the box to do it, frankly, you have to have an insurance advisor that's willing to put in the effort. Um, I do know your insurance advisor, she's phenomenal, um, she is a good one, because we have a lot of self-funded clients with them too. Um, I think that's the last slide, is that great, Mr. Kayler? So, I have some booklets that I handed out, that's the proposal that I had put together, uh, for Mr. Kay here, it's, it has. Everything we talked about in it, uh, it also has our per member per month subscription costs, or transparent allocation, you need to be with this model. Uh, it's thirty-nine seventy-five, thirty-nine dollars seventy-five cents per member per month, unlimited visits, unlimited procedures. Our labs, as I mentioned, we get them at wholesale rates, so we have a lab sheet in there that says what our costs are, I mentioned that lipid panel, I think it's twelve thirty-seven, period, a hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, we have a whole list of our common labs, if I included every lab, you'd have a book that's that thick, because we can order just one, and you can get it at another clinic. Um, has our leadership structure, there may have all that good stuff in there, so, um, not here to pressure anything today, I'm here to hopefully educate you on. Alternatives for healthcare, direct primary care, what other organizations are using, how it could work with your health plan, and you could see, hopefully, lower renewal rates next year. So open up to questions if anyone has them.
And, and, if I, if I remember right during that conversation, uh, if, if the board would say, yep, we wanna try this for a year and see how it goes. There'd be like a two-week setup turnaround, so if we, if, if, if the board didn't make a decision until May or even June's board meeting. By July one, we could be up and running to have our people go visit.
Yeah, June's board meeting was June fifteenth, we could have it ready to go, if, if you were willing to meet with me and spend some time doing it, we could do it in a day, we could do it in two days. We'd have to create a bio, we'd have to create a bio so that our providers, when your employee comes in and needs a referral, we know how to manage that. So if they're using a network right now, who the network referrals are, uh, if you have EAP, how we can help you refer to the after mental health, because you're already paying for it. Um, just different things like that, um, but yeah, we can move into a community as long as we have, if we have a provider already, we can build a clinic in three months. And Ken and I are doing that stuff right now, so.
Well, the nice thing about our location is we're triangulated, because we have Plover, Weston, and Clintville.
Yep.
Um, for people that live east, west, north, south, whatever, so, um, the other thing that I just wanted to inform the board, I, I have been talking with the Stevens Point Human Resource Director. Um, estimated now, uh, if I, if I, if I collected and understand the data correctly. Um, she was able to say that I think they started in January with Anovia.
I told last fall.
Well, it was last fall, okay, so maybe it's more months then, um, because what she reported is that since. They started using Anovia, they've had over seven hundred visits that would have gone to. Primary care, emergency, uh, emergency rooms or, or walk-ins, and over seven hundred visits, maybe not net savings. But it, it, it's over, I think, I wanna say, she said it was over eight or nine hundred thousand dollars that has not gone. Against their insurance company or their experience, so, I don't know what the per member per month versus that savings is, so I, I don't wanna call it savings. But that's a big chunk of money, now obviously Stevens Point's a lot bigger than what Roswell School District is, but if they're seeing people engage with. I just, all part of healthcare, a different way to get it, um, done than the tr- traditional, I go to Marshall Clinic, I go to Aspiris, I go to Bellum Health, I go to wherever, Oakleaf, wherever I, I go. Um, and it's a different approach to that, and they have saved. Eight or nine hundred thousand dollars from going onto their insurance plan against their deductibles, against their renewal rates for next year. To me, that, that's why I'm interested, and not that the board's gonna make the decision tonight, but I wanted you to have the information, I thank you very much for presenting, because. I, I don't know that we're ready to say, oh yeah, let's do it, but I think next month, it's another conversation to say, alright, and if we come up with questions, then we can reach out. And say, hey, what about this, or what about this, um, I guess. Um, you had talked about, um, anxiety, depression, and ADHD, those types of things, that's something you can do, but based on. You said based on a couple of levels, that might be a referral, depending on.
Absolutely, depending on the, on the complexity.
But, yeah, but it usually starts at the primary care, the, uh, person's diagnosed, uh, and then referred to, uh, appropriate counselor.
So can your doctors say you're on a medication already? Can you then prescribe it, or do you still have to go to a specialist? You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, um, depends on the medication again, right, if it's a specialty medication for something that's like, very rare.
Yeah.
Probably want you to see the specialist, if you're coming in on a surgery for anxiety, something like that, absolutely, you know, those are the types of things we certainly take on. Our, our EMR system, so all the patient records is integrated with the systems, big sys- uh, systems epic is nine times out of ten that they're using. So we can transfer records internally, you don't have to make any calls to do it, we just request them, they send them to us, orders, we do the same way.
Yeah, so just like, if, if your specialist is with, uh, uh, is with Aspiris, we could look in and see what that note is. So there's, for you, it's big, it makes no difference that your primary care is independent, uh, we're gonna share the same information, and we're gonna share with them as well.
So do you have specific collaborations with specialists then, that like, okay, if we're going to mental health, like, what avenue is that?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna depend on your, on your, on your plan design, right, so if you have a value-based approach, we're gonna use, uh, as a good human works. And, uh, if you have a, you don't have any steerage, and you have a network, then we're going to refer to the network, right? Because it's going to depend on what your plan design is, the last thing we want is for, to send someone to that, to that specialist that we have a direct contract with. And they try to submit it to insurance, and insurance denies it, right, so that's why we work with you on your plan design, how far you wanna take things. I would say a good starting point, full transparency, what I would do, um, start with direct primary care, still use your system specialists. Uh, just like you're doing with your, I don't know what, the, your security now, Aspiris plan, or.
We're, recommendations, consortium is going to, um, security.
Okay, yeah, I've seen that with a number of groups actually recently, um, because you're looking at premiums, right, and what networks you have, so. If it's me, I'm gonna do personal, um, for my family, I would do a high deductible plan, I would do a low premium, because I know what I have to pay out of pocket is going to be less. I wanna keep it less, knowing that school district's investing into Anovia, and they're gonna be able to capture seventy percent of my care there, ninety percent of my care there, my primary care. Rare, in my experience, that you do need, um, a specialty referral, but when you need it, you wanna have coverage for, right, it's catastrophic coverage. And I have a feeling, depending on plan designs, how you're looking at things, there's a lot of folks here that are in the same boat as me, that have little kids at home that are sick all the time. I'm taking the high deductible, low premium, and I'm going to Anovia, because they're gonna be able to help my kids, your infections, and all that stuff.
Do you have individuals who are Medicare that come to?
Yeah, great question, um, so there's a lot more regulatory compliance, uh, considerations with Medicare. Uh, Medicare laws, if we have a provider that is enrolled to bill Medicare, Medicare laws that we have to bill Medicare.
Right.
So now, we're in a system that we cut overhead, right, so we don't have those prior specialists, billing specialists, all those people to bill the insurance company. Um, so there's a lot more workarounds that we have to do.
So the, the, the short, the short answer is, uh, no. But the, but if, if, uh, if you're primarily, if you're on the school district's plan, or eligible for it, well, then you can, they can pay that subscription for you. And as long as, as long as the school district is your, your primary covering you, we can see you under that.
Oh, so if you're Medicare, Medicaid secondary, if you're in their school district plan, yes, primary, no. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
How much have you guys seen prices fluctuate, you said you've been doing this for four years, and obviously, it's thirty-nine seventy-five per month per person, right?
Yeah.
How much, obviously, that's a one-year contract, right?
Yep, yep.
And then how much have you seen it from four years ago to now, what has been the fluctuation, if any?
Yeah, um, so, that, that's, uh, there's a little complexity, because it's based on your utilization, we're expecting a thirty percent utilization. And, uh, in rare ca- cases, we've had people who had less than thirty percent utilization, and we've actually dropped their, their price. Um, but, uh, I can tell you that, uh, so, when we started off four years ago, we were at thirty-one, uh. Dollars, uh, per person, and now, we're at, so, um, I can't do the math that quickly, but, um.
Inflation or lower.
We're, uh, uh, you, you know, um, most of our, our, our members probably see somewhere around the neighborhood of, of three percent increase each year. Yeah.
But as Ken mentioned, we had a group this year that was lower utilization, then we dropped the price. So it's our job, once we have a partnership, to meet with you quarterly, or more, minimum quarterly, to have utilization meetings. In those meetings, we go through reports that we have, so we have, like I said, about ninety companies, just under ninety companies we're partnering with, we come up with algorithms to have an idea. How many visits you should have generated based on, each, you would expect for a company your size. If it's lower than that, let's talk strategy, what can we do to get people to try it, right, we have people giving. Always gift cards, bonuses, come into your primary there, lower premiums. We have providers going onsite and doing blood pressure clinics, and I'm coming onsite to open enrollment meetings and educating people on what this entails. Um, just to make sure people are using it, right, we don't want you to pay for something you're not using.
But just, so, so you know, uh, uh, like Gambler Johnson, their PM PM is much higher, because they have, as, as Jake told. They have incredible utilization, and they want that, they encourage it, uh, but they're not paying thirty-nine seventy-five, uh, because they're, they're using more services. Um, so, uh, they're one more higher, uh, uh, membership, but, so.
So it's like, the average of all the people, is that how you determine what your monthly rate is?
Um, uh.
Does it go individually?
Uh, so, we're, uh, we're giving you a rate for, um, an, an organization your size.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, uh, so, so, of, of course, like, uh, uh, it's a little bit more, uh, again, full transparency. A little, a little bit more than the Stevens Point School District, but the Stevens Point School District has twenty-one hundred lives, so the risk for us is less, right? Um, uh, you know, uh, you guys have less lives, and, and you might be super users, well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do very well on that deal, but we're willing to take it. And, and, and.
In this, in words, no, uh, knows our census, I think we're at sixty-five versus twenty-one hundred. A little bit different, right?
Yeah.
Um, and that is people, that, that's people that are eligible for insurance based on, um, and, and, and families, right? So, if you have two kids at home, and, and a spouse, that's four, four lives on our insurance plan, so it's not just employees, but it's their, their families as well. I wanna say that our census is, uh, sixty-five eligible. And, which makes it very difficult for us to go out on our own, because if we have one catastrophic, we're, we're done, right?
Exactly.
And, I, I know people have asked in the past, like, oh, would we ever wanna break from our current consortium of the six school districts? S- seven entities, including Marathon County Special Ed, and Stevens Point is the, the nearest, biggest. School district, and, and I asked them, and, and, uh, the, the director of HR said, well, probably not now, because our experience is, is one twenty-nine. Right now, which is not, we're, we're sitting at, Roswell's sitting at like one oh three, one oh five, somewhere in there, which isn't great, but it's way better than one twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Um, and the idea with. Um, and the idea with potential, with, with this potential is really next year's renewal.
Yeah.
Um, and it seems like school districts especially, and I don't know if private sectors like this, it's like. We're on a two-year by two-year by two-year going to bid process because we'll have the first year, maybe, maybe not have a not to exceed the second year. And then a really big increase the third year, oh, let's go to bid and hopefully, but with less players in the market. And going back frequently, they're like, well, you're not going to stay with us long-term anyway, so we're not going to give you a good, we don't, we don't care about your business unless. They've lost a ton of people, all of a sudden they're like, we need somebody and we need some clients, so.
Competition is the best thing they can have in healthcare in those kinds of, I mean, because it's going to drive costs down. If you don't have it, it's monopoly game, right?
Yeah.
You have to pay for what we're in charge of.
But Carl, it's sort of to your, to your point, uh, previous question is. Primary care, there's going to be about thirty percent of your population who's going to engage in primary care in a natural population. Uh, we just don't know what's thirty percent. So that's why, you know, imagine for five, we're, we're telling you for five hundred dollars. You're going to have unlimited primary care, uh, uh, so, but it's, it's just, we're just. Uh, you know, running the, the, the numbers.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and that's the way everybody should do it. Aspiras could do the same thing, right? But they just don't and, uh. Maybe it just took somebody from RIO to, to say, uh, uh, we can do it this way.
It just supports where at sixty-five members at just under forty dollars per month of the month, that puts us at about thirty-one thousand dollars, which is slightly more than one family plan. So, and that's on a annual basis to have unlimited care divert. And, and this, the incentive for our, our employees would be, oh, it doesn't hit my deductible.
Yeah.
And we have high deductible plans of, of thirty-three and sixty-six hundred, um. So if you're on the sixty-six hundred dollar deductible and I can steer ninety percent of my care. Through Inovia, that, that could be a huge savings for them as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the only, the only, uh, you know, most of our, uh, partners pick up labs and imaging because we get so cheap. It, it's maybe going to cost you another thousand a month.
Yes, there's two ways you can do it. Either have the employees pay for their own labs or cover it. Um, we want people to use it, right? Removing those barriers to it is when people use it, which will save the plan money. So it just depends how you look at it.
All right. Yes, thank you. Do you know how to get out?
I do.
Okay.
What if you have a country district? Give a card?
Yeah.
I was just curious, I was better presented, I would handle those out. We have great insurance, but. Yeah, we do have some union groups. Yeah, we do a lot of different groups that we can order with larger consortiums. So you can start with those school districts in common, we see what we can do from price. You're right, but we do work with construction unions as well.
All right.
Yep, yep.
From a selling client, Jake.
That's all right, I get it. You want to believe how often I get it, actually.
His fault, that's how he told me.
Yeah, you bet.
Told me in the meeting, Jake from State Farm.
I put their head, I'm like, no, no, it's not.
I know, he's from Inovia, but.
All right, thanks everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
Take care, have a good night. Watch the deer.
Okay.
Um, thank you, board, and, and thank you, audience, for entertaining that. I just wanted to have them come and present because. It's an alternative approach to the two-year renewal, not to exceed in the game that we play with insurance. Um, and, and when we have ten, twelve, fifteen percent insurance increases, regardless of who the carrier is. Uh, it's not sustainable practice any longer, knowing that we have, um, limited revenue, resources, limited, limited increased revenue. Year to year to year, um, we have to, I, I feel we have to consider other options to get some, some of the same care. And so this might be an option. Absolutely no decision tonight. I would ask you to think about it, read through the, um, the, the proposal. Think of questions. I can reach out, um, you know, over the course of next month and then we'll revisit in the future to see if it's something that. Do we want to try it for a year and see how it goes? Maybe that's the best, best option because again, for one. Roughly one family plan, healthcare, um, plan, we could potentially steer thirty, maybe fifty percent. Of our primary care needs to Inovia and that would help our, so just something to consider.
Okay. All right, we don't have to take the action on that. Discussion, possible discussion, decision on health insurance renewal.
So really the, uh, um. The consort, again, the part of a consortium, just remind everybody, our special consortium is also health insurance consortium. Schools of Abbott'sford, Athens, Spencer, Edgar, Marathon, the employees of Marathon County Special Ed and Rochelle. So there's really seven entities. Um, we were faced with a eight percent renewal, no, nine. I think it was not to exceed nine last year and it ended up being like eight point six. They had a twelve percent not to exceed this year. It came in at twelve. Um, the consortium did decide to go bid because we, we go out to bid because we, we thought if there's something cheaper than twelve, we just. We have to know whether or not there is. We didn't want to just accept twelve. We understand that that creates. Um, kind of a nightmare because the questions from our employees then is, is, is my chiropractor still covered? Can I still stay with my same doctor? You know, is there a narrow network or is there an expansive network? Um, we went to bid and the overall consortium renewal. Is projected to be six point eight percent. There's two schools, us at ten and Edgar at fourteen. That don't fall in that six and the reason is because we had a number of our employees on the Aspiras plan that went to their narrow network. Because their network for Aspiras includes. A number of other, um, healthcare facilities except for Marshfield. Now, the, the big plan, the statewide or the premier plan or freedom plan, I think it was called. It includes everybody, including Marshall Clinic. Well, Marshfield's narrow network only is Marshall Clinic. So when they came back with the renewal for Edgar and for Rochelle, they, um, M three anticipated. That they would move anybody that was on a narrow network to the premier network because Marshfield's so narrow. It's only Marshall Clinic systems. Um, and so they said, well, we're just assuming that people are going to go to the Marshall Premier so they can have choice as to facilities. Um, and that renewal for us came back at a debt about ten percent, but that was still a thirty-five-ish thousand dollar savings over the Aspiras renewal. Um, so even for us, it makes sense. Um, again, people, new, new insurance cards, new plans, new everything. So what I'm asking, um, the board to approve tonight is the move to, um, Marshfield Clinic. Um, we do have some options and I did present to our staff. Costs as far as what it would look like if the board didn't cover anything when it comes to the increased costs. And that shocked some people because, um, when we looked at this comparison, um, and let me shrink this just a little bit. Basically, right now, if somebody's in this, um, high deductible, um, narrow network, they paid twelve dollars and twenty-six dollars. If they would go to that same option with Marshall Clinic, but again, remember the care, the, the, the network is not, not equal at all, it would be free. So better example, let's say that we were in Plan Six A, which is the low deductible. People buy up to that, they spend more premiums to get to the lower deductible. They would be spending fifty dollars for a single and ninety-eight dollars for a family plan. Now, in all likelihood, they probably will not go to the Marshfield narrow network because it's not the same. Robust network that Aspiras has. So if we would move those people to the premier plan for a family plan, ninety-eight dollars a paycheck. To two hundred and forty-four dollars a paycheck. That was sticker shock for a lot of people, but again, that's if the board decided not to cover any of the health insurance increase. It's not what I'm recommending. But that's all the information we had at the time. As we've kind of put together a, uh, a new comparison, I've clicked on these other possibilities and, um. Uh, Rachel was working on these yesterday, uh, she was out today and I, I reviewed them. I'm, I'm not one hundred percent well-voiced as far as. I think we should go with this or go with that, but there are some options that we could take a look at. Um, really, if we take a look at option three, this is where we've tried to level, uh, the playing field and we've, we've also taken a look. At what if we added a two thousand and four thousand dollar deductible? Because that's kind of an intermediate plan. Um, that might be an option, but what I'm going to recommend is if the board can say. Yes, we agree with the consortium because of the cost savings of thirty-five thousand dollars in renewal. If everybody would go to the premier plan now, obviously if somebody goes to their spouse's plan or if they stick with the narrow. Then it's going to be not ten percent, it's going to be less than that. That was under the assumption that everybody goes to the expensive plan. Um, my request for the board would be then, um, to potentially. Because again, as we get into May, there'd be the enrollment period and usually you want three weeks in May. So I would ask the board to review this. That would give myself and, and Rachel enough time to also present to staff with these numbers. And then we could come back potentially in a special board meeting, meeting the week of, uh, first week of May. And then we could make a decision on exactly what we want to offer, um, as our plan, if that would be agreeable to the board. So tonight I would ask for approval to accept the recommendation to go to Marshall Clinic and then come back with a special board meeting. Um, in early May to approve the plan design for our employees. If that sounds fair to everybody. Just because I haven't had enough time to really get into this data and, and crunch it down. Mostly because the last couple of days have been a little bit hectic, unfortunately.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So again, um. When we, when we think about the, the deductibles, we, we do have, in, in, in current plan, we have thirty-two hundred for. A s- a single and sixty-four for, for family. You'll notice that in this model, that goes to thirty-three and sixty-six. Because again, the federal government has adjusted what's considered a high deductible. So then there would also be the question to the board in plan design, um, as we did last year, the board did agree to up the HSA. Um, contribution to employees to cover the, the, that, that increase, uh, what constitutes a high deductible plan. Not that we're, not that the board's covering all of that, but just increase the contribution to accommodate all of that increase. Um, and then their, uh, employees right now have the option to go from the thirty-six or sixty-four down to the sixteen and thirty-two. And you can see that obviously the premiums per month are, are more than that in all cases. Um, and again, the, the reason behind the, the rate of renewals, that anybody that was on the signature network. We're assuming that they're going to bump from the ninety-eight over here to, um, option eight, which would be the premier network. Um, we're working some things. This, um, it, it really is that. I'd like to have multiple options. This is calculated kind of, um, uh, at a seventy percent level, so if the board. Would say, um, you know, we're going to cover seventy percent of the healthcare cost. This is based on that percentage, not a hundred percent, but not fifty. But we didn't want to do, oh, this is what sixty percent looks like, this is what seventy percent looks like, this is what eighty percent looks like without. The board seeing this first and then providing recommendations. And that's why I would like to give the board some time to review this data. And then come back in, in early May and say, this is what we, we agreed to a plan design. It gives administration and business office a little bit more time. It also gives the board time to review.
So are you asking for us as a board to approve a certain health plan renewal? Or are you asking us just to approve you going into the Marshall Clinic plan, I mean, the security health plan?
I'm asking the board to, my recommendation is to, um, have the board approve moving to. Marshall Clinic and accepting the consortium's, um, vote. I will say that it was six-one in a vote to go to security health. Um, and then we would come back and approve the design in early May.
So security health is really, I'm, I'm just doing my brain here. Security health is really Marshfield?
Yes, it is Marshall Clinic's insurance.
Okay, that's where I.
Now, it, it is a little bit goofy because you have a Aspiras hospitals and it's by Aspiras Health Plan. You have Marshall Clinics that are by security health.
Yeah.
So it's, 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 I mean, it should be Marshall Clinic Health, Marshall Clinic Insurance.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions or concerns?
And I will say, just to, um, add this in here. And, and this is something to think about for that next meeting. When I click here on the financial considerations. We, we know right now that increased revenue, we will have a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the referendum because it's been graduated over time. We also anticipate that the three hundred twenty-five dollar, uh, dollar per pupil, per year will remain in, in the next manium. And so that would be a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So we're, we're right around that three hundred four thousand dollars in additional revenue from, from current. Um, we know that we, i- if we, if we covered a three percent salary increase, our current CPI, um, is two point nine five for negotiations. Um, if we provided a three-point or three percent on individual salary, it would be about one thirty-eight. That WRS and tax implication is, um, twenty. And then the health insurance increase would be that one nineteen, almost one twenty, that's at the ten percent if everybody goes to the premium network. Um, we know we have an eight percent or we're anticipating an eight percent increase in special ed services. And through the middle school adjustment, we've had, um, availability to not replace. One, sixth grade position with them going to middle school and instead have, um, other teachers, um, pick up a, a couple of middle school classes or a middle school class. And so that all calculated, those total new expenses that we are aware of right now would be about two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That means that we have just over nine thousand dollars in inflationary increases for everything else. Fuel, electricity, supplies, markers, clean wax, um, that's not a whole lot. Normally, what schools will do is just a rule of thumb. There's not written in any law or statute, but normally the rule of thumb is, is, is one-third, two-thirds rule. Two-third goes to staff and raises and benefits and one-third goes to other expenses. So in this scenario. If we have three hundred five thousand dollars of additional revenue that we're aware of, one could then, um. Uh, assume, you know, about two hundred thousand dollars towards salaries and benefits and one hundred thousand dollars towards, um. Other inflationary increases. So those are kind of the numbers behind what we're working at and that's why we also calculated at seventy percent. This is what the numbers would look like as far as, um, having employees pick up thirty percent of the healthcare with a full CPI raise on individual salary. That's kind of the, the, the assumptions here. Not that anything's been voted, not that we've negotiated that. That's just some of the assumptions that went into the planning for the numbers that are presented. I'd like the time, I'm, I'm asking the board to take the time to review those, come back in May and then we can settle on our plan design.
Okay, so basically what I need right now is a motion to approve the. Health insurance renewal option as we discussed between the security health plan and the consortium. Do I have a motion?
So the contract with the security would be for how long?
It goes, uh, it's, it's an annual, it's an annual renewal, but, um, and there's not, there's not a, not to exceed clause for the second year. They wouldn't get, I wouldn't, they wouldn't bid that out. Um, so. It's an annual contract. There's not a term. It's not for X amount of years. But previous, my, my previous comment when Jake was here is that if we constantly go to bid every year, then you don't. Nobody takes you serious, so then there's not a good renewal unless we can show that through, and really. Again, it's consortium, so, um, that's good because it's, it's kind of the sample approach. The more people we have. The better insulation we have from catastrophic costs. But that's also negative in renewal process because if we do Inovia and should we have vastly lower experience. It will help us, but again, those numbers get absorbed in the consortium and it would be better if everybody in the consortium would do that same thing. Um, but in the consortium, we still have our individual renewal rate, so it will still help us. It would be much better if the entire consortium would use Inovia and I think there's interest there. But I don't know if everybody's going to go to it for next year, but I felt highly that we would. Receive a good bid should we go to bid as consortium after one year with security health. So in all likelihood, again, we're kind of on this two-year cycle. Um, and according to M three, Jerry McDonald has explained that if we could get to a three-year cycle, even better. Does that, it sounds like three years, it's not very long, but at least a three-year cycle, when we go to bid, people are like, oh, you might stick around for three years, we'd get premiums for three years. That was why she initially had responded to say, let's stay with Aspiras even though it's twelve percent. Because then next year, we have that much more leverage power because we've been here for three years. Um, just, it doesn't make sense for every year, but there's not necessarily a term for the contract.
So we wouldn't be able to go into Inovia until following year?
No, that's something, that, that. We would still need to have security or Aspiras or WCA or.
Oh, that's completely separate.
Inovia would just be the primary care to reduce the premiums.
Yeah.
Because we wouldn't have the experience going to those clinics, so.
Okay.
And, and as I, as I talked, um, as you were talking, uh, lipid panels and those types of things. Um, a screening through Aspiras right now, um, the lab work is like a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty dollars and they would get it for five bucks. So that's crazy. So that's crazy. Um, Jamie McDonald did give us an example where, and I, she didn't, she said the term, it was a medical term. I'm sorry, I didn't grasp the medical term because I'm not a doctor. But it was some procedure that went through, um, and I don't remember if it was Aspiris or, or security health, but it was like a nine hundred and fifty, almost thousand dollar um expense. And an OVA was able to do it for ninety-six dollars. So that, I mean, that's the difference. So that's almost eight, that's almost nine hundred dollars that wouldn't go toward, well, it'd be hypothetically, it'd be uh almost a thousand dollars that wouldn't go to our insurance company. And if we did that multiple times, just again, that's where Stephen's point is saying that they've had almost uh over eight hundred thousand dollars of costs that didn't go to their insurance that should then help their renewal. And that's the idea with it. It's, it's kind of like the Aflac. It's like that, that gap insurance or that gap coverage. We still need the Marshall Clinic and Aspiris um in order to say, okay, now I do have something that they can't treat. I, I need to have that as a backup, as a bail safe for that.
It's just a supplemental to keep the race going.
But you're not having to pay your deductible. Yeah, your deductible, you're hoping that.
And that way, i- if, as Jake was saying, if I go back to.
Okay, so I guess what we're voting on right now is just to take the approve the health insurance for security health plan for, for the future. So do I have a motion and do I have a second? And then we can vote on it, or?
I'll make it.
Okay, man, is there a second? Yeah, there is motion been made in second to approve the health insurance renewal as discussed for security health plan. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Supplement student insurance, as we know it now.
Refreshing after a long time. Supplemental student insurance, this is the student insurance, uh, accident insurance that we offer through the main office to begin a school year. Last year, we did go to a new company, uh, because it's a little bit cheaper for our families for the same amount of coverage. Um, talking with uh Carl up in the main office, she said nothing but good things to say. They came back at the same rate, so um, it's really nothing that we pay for. It would be uh offered to parents should they say, hey, I want to take out you know, sports insurance or something of that nature. And there's, there's six or seven different plans, and that usually goes out with the registration packet. So the recommendation is to approve our second year with supplemental health, uh, student insurance, and I can't even remember the name of the company. Student Insurance Services, based out of Michigan.
Okay, James, is there a second? I'll second. Motion has been made to second to approve the supplement insurance that is offered to parents as discussed. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. CISA five representative.
Normally we select this person this um meeting because then before our next meeting, there's usually a large group board meeting for CISA. You can attend in person. You can also attend virtually. Unfortunately for us, the CISA meeting is taking place on the date of our next board meeting because we're now on Thursdays, not Mondays. Um, but I would still recommend i- if somebody's interested in this, um, I already emailed Jeremy Beal, the uh director of CISA five, and he understands that we will not be in attendance due to our commitments to our local board meeting. Um, it would still behoove us to select a representative if there's somebody that is interested to receive those CISA communications so they could keep us up to date with what, what CISA happenings beyond um what is recorded normally.
Well, since I'll just throw my viewpoint on it. Since we're not being able to go to the meeting, and when they know they're not coming, should we wait to discuss this when we have our new board members on for next year? I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to vote somebody or somebody who's interested.
And again, normally the main reason we do it uh in April is because they would then attend.
Right.
Because we can't attend anyway, what we're really looking for is.
I, I vote for Angela. Like when you go to the bathroom and you holy leave.
Can I go back home on my house and watch this meeting?
No, I'm just kidding.
You can't. I did last year.
But what it does is it allows us to provide a board number's name to CISA, then just mail out uh things and, and CISA information.
It could be any of us. I mean, I'm not, I didn't mean to put.
If you're on the table, that's fine.
I don't know unless somebody wants to volunteer. You know?
I'll do it.
You'll do it, Jake?
For about another fifty minutes.
I can take one for the team if people want me to be a nice report back.
Just table it, okay.
Yeah.
We're just gonna.
That's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, that'll give everybody time.
Yeah, to just re-vote.
Okay, possible and possible decisions. Oh my gosh, I can't even talk in the school board meetings.
So I compiled, uh, compiled next year's meeting dates. Um, this is based on Thursdays. We're, we're moving to Thursdays to uh, accommodate schedules. So here's the listing of all the meetings. Um, we have last year during the annual meeting, we said that we would set it between the range. We're proposing to have our annual meeting in September rather than in um August. And the reason is because just we have more information that comes in. And I think it's sometimes confusing for um board members and community members alike to say, okay, in August, we say this is the budget, this is what the mill rate's going to be. But then in October, when we get our real information, the mill rate's different. And there have been some questions about, well, you said in August, the mill rate was going to be XYZ, and now it's ABC, like why? Um, the closer we get, the closer we are and the less variance there is. So we're, we're suggesting having that meeting in September. I do not recommend having it in October, which I've been in a district that did that. And because you have to have some posting and some annual, or uh notices that go out in the paper, we had to do that about a month in advance. And so the numbers that were published in the paper did not, not match the budget hearing, which also did not match then the regular meeting, which was right after, and they're like, we are so confused. A month earlier, we'll have pretty good information and less adjustments then for the uh setting of the levy in October. So unless anybody has any objection to the Thursdays, and again, I move the um March meeting because of spring break to the fourth Thursday. That's what kind of our standard practice. This should also alleviate the conflict with ban conscience. Now, in the spring, we have track conflicts, but I don't know that there's a day that you cannot have conflicts anymore.
Okay. So I need a mo- motion and a second to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school board meeting dates as presented.
Yes.
Oh, motion, okay. I'll second it. All those in favor to approve the twenty, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school board meeting dates as presented, say aye. Those opposed? Motion, uh, app, any abstentions? Motion carried. Okay. Post referendum strategies.
This is not an actionable item, but it is a discussion item. I will, I will be brief because this is going to take our summer to prepare what we do next, uh, due to the failed referendum. Just some things to think about, um, having different committees from a community and internally a staff committee. We didn't do it this time. Right or wrong strategy, um, I was thinking that, okay, we've, we've had support for referendums in the past. Maybe we do a glitz creative information. Do we need to have a vote yes committee or anything like that? And evidently we did, because we did do it, we didn't pass. However, I thought it was very interesting when you take a look at some of this data. Here's the different referendums. Now, obviously, we, there was a non-recurring and a reoccurring that happened in April of twenty seventeen. But if you take a look at the yes votes, this last referendum had the second highest yes votes out of any referendum, and we're the only one to fail. So I thought that was interesting because if you take a look at the total voters, now, this might be an anomaly up here. But the reality is, you know, I got eleven hundred thirty-four, eleven eighty-three, eleven thirty-three, and this year there was eighteen fifty-seven. That's like seven hundred more voters that came to the polls. Normally, and I, and I did reach out to school perceptions to say, hey, you're, you're a data company. Um, do you have any recommendations or any insight for the board on whether it would be good to go in February next year during a primary where usually there's hardly anybody that goes to the polls? Or do we wait till April again where there's the general election? And again, rule of thumb says more people vote, the higher probability of pass. The other thing of note is they said, um, based on their research and what they've uh viewed, fall referendums have a much higher probability of passing. And I just wonder if that's because all the kids go back to school after summer. People are like, yes, the school's amazing. Take my kids to the day. Woo! And there's a good deal, maybe? I don't know. Uh, but then by April, it's like, oh, dang school, you know, can't wait till summer, grr. Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Uh, I don't know if that plays in or not, but if they look at track record, fall referendums pass more successfully than April do. Um, usually the more people that go to the polls, the higher probability of passing. However, it is something to consider because, again, the last one, only five hundred seventy-three yes, narrow margin of victory, but it passed, and there was only eleven thirty-three. Um, so I, I just, I found that interesting. Other things, timing, community committee, staff committee. Uh, I do believe based on our demographics, we should, we did, we tried to use the paper and then social media, but what about, the question is, how do we reach those people that aren't, aren't reachable? And so maybe we use the same mailing list that we used for our survey, put money in the postcards, send it out there, maybe with a QR code, maybe with a link to more information, some basic information on those postcards, maybe do that three times so that people feel like they have more information, or at least we're provided with a link to get more information um about uh that type of thing. And then the other thing that uh was offered this time, and we didn't know, we didn't know if we should or if it would be a, a good thing to do, but the WASL personnel, M Chapman and Mike Berry have offered to come and speak to any community. Now, in order to do that, I mean, we held a little meeting, we had four or five people show up. It would take all the board members to get on the phone and start calling your constituents as well as the community committee, as well as the staff committee to try to pack the auditorium for some speaker like Ann or Mike to come in because they know their stuff. It's all they, this is their living. That's what they do is school finance, referendums, those types of the why it's necessary, what it means for our individual situation. And again, it's one of those things where you get somebody that's thirty miles away, they're a resident expert, right? Or maybe not resident expert, they are an expert because they don't, they're not local. What do I know? I don't know anything. But you get somebody from Addison or from Eau Claire or from Appleton that knows this and does this, they have a little bit more um expertise and a little bit more uh credentials than, than I do or we do. So that's just a thought. Again, no decision. That's just a discussion of some, some things to think about as we move to the next referendum preparation. Thank you.
Okay, discussion of possible decisions and policy updates, first reading. Does anybody have any concerns about those? That we don't have taken the um motion, motion on it, but please make sure.
First reading. Um, if you had a chance to review some of them, um, great. If you didn't, I would say between now and next month, but then next month, we can wordsmith and go into that. Many of these are coming from the last uh update. And a- again, you'll notice that some are the same, but it would be like a, a three thousand, a four thousand, special staff and sports staff. So I just ask that we review those and we can uh take the vote next month.
Sounds good. Okay, discussion and possible decision and co-op sports request.
I did receive, uh, similar to last year, I received a request from our um co-op hockey player.
Whose mom is here?
I.
I was trying to do it very.
Who's down is watching online.
And to refresh the board's memory, there was a request um last year to, if the board would consider to assist other local data, um, Amherst provides uh five hundred dollars towards that. Um, it's way more than that. I know that uh Mr. Schills received the bill, and I want to say it was like only a hundred dollars to play. Amherst still does five hundred, so um that's what we agreed to do last year, and that would be my recommendation again.
Mom, do you have anything you want to say?
I think you did six hundred last year to beat Amherst.
Yeah.
I did once. Was it? Okay.
And we did. That was, that was.
Well, you gotta be better than Amherst.
See, Mom, thanks, Andrea. We appreciate any help that you can.
Right, he loves playing, so we hope that he can continue and still represent Marshall.
And I do believe, um, if I remember correctly, wasn't last year's bill like twenty-two and this year's bill is like twenty-eight?
It was a little bit less last year, but I think we had less kids this year, so.
Oh, is that way?
A lot of playing time, he really enjoys it, so he's still gonna stay here in Marshall.
All right, so I need a motion. Somebody needs to make a motion, and then we'll second it.
What's the motion for the same along again, or?
Well, that's up to you. If you want to make a motion to give him six hundred dollars again, then that would be the motion. If you want to give him more or less, whatever motion you want to make, Chris, if you want to make a motion.
I would make a motion for the six hundred.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, James, he's got to beat Amherst.
Six for five.
Yeah. Don't expect to have it next year, but Angela, think about that. Okay, I know the motion was made and seconded to approve six hundred dollars for this. James seconded, uh, for a co-op request as presented. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Me.
Okay, one abstention.
Just in case if I ever have to run into this with my kids.
Okay. All right, so there's four and one abstention. Uh, motion is carried. So um do, do, well, we'll make sure Rachel knows what to do, you know, like it's sent it out. Okay. All right, thank you.
She is also watching.
Rachel's watching? Hi, Rachel. Okay. Hi, everybody. Okay. Um, next one is possible discussion and possible decision on a bus repair. What happened to the bus?
So uh the reason this is coming to the board is because it's over the threshold um of the amount. Um, initially, they've gone through and, and, and have done some initial repairs. And if we take a look at this, this is bus thirteen. It's uh purchased in, in twenty thirteen, so it's twelve years old, has, you know, over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. But has, they're replacing the injectors and some of those things, but because that would come over the, the threshold coming to the, the uh board for official approval, um arguably, um to keep this bus in the fleet and running, um, this should this should uh improve the engine quality that we could get multiple years out of it moving forward, so open to questions, my recommendation is to keep that bus in the fleet, even though we're getting another one.
Is this one that we would be taking out of fleet then?
Um, if we get, we have, we do get the new one then? We have a couple that are older. But like again, we tried, my understanding, what Todd has explained in the past, he tries to have, even though we only have seven bus routes, we have twelve to thirteen buses that are functional. We do, the older ones eventually get cannibalized for, you know, light bulbs and, and, you know, different things within them to be a, could be a distributor cap or a wire or something that gets cannibalized, and then eventually that bus then, you know, gets uh discarded. I know that I, to, to, to your question, I don't know. I know we have a couple that are older, but I don't know if this would be the first one to to get rid of or not. I do not know that.
So we're looking at eight thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents?
Total, yeah.
Is that, it says with, okay, nevermind. Gotcha. So how much is a new bus just out of, I know it's a.
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
How much? What? No, three hundred. Oh, no, okay, that was, that was three years. When I was first, when I was first here, we bought a bus that was uh ninety-eight thousand, but that was paid, how was it? It was approved and built in
Two years in twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-three. It was approved in twenty-two, built during twenty-three, and it arrived the summer of twenty-three. So what a sentence has said, or what other bus manufacturers have said, is that um a regular bus, now, last year we bought a handicap accessible bus with a lift in it, and we did the underneath storage for the extra couple thousand dollars to tune of a hundred and fifty-four thousand. If you order right now for delivery next summer, a regular plain-old standard plain-jane bus is one fifty-eight without any special undercarriage or anything. We did have um another company bring propane bus and show it to us because right now they're about three to four thousand dollars more than a diesel bus. But right now with diesel and, and, you know, depth and, and all those things going into the diesel engine and the jump in cost for that, um, they're going to be cheaper next year and beyond, the propane bus. Um, when I was, and, and propane has repairs just like any other vehicle. But when I was up north, um, they all use propane buses because they didn't have to worry about gelling in the diesel field. Um, mileage is about the same. Um, you can get, I think it was a ten thousand gallon tank at the uh bus garage to fill up, and, and you can fill your own. And that would be if we eventually go that route, and even if we did, you know, a couple of buses, it'd be better to do that than to have uh a propane, you know, truck come out every week to fill up the buses.
I'm just curious, is the mileage per gallon about the same, propane versus diesel? Yes?
They told us, the salespeople told us it is. Okay. I don't have the data, I don't know.
Because what is propane a buck seventy-five right now? Because what is propane a buck seventy-five right now? I mean, and that fluctuates too. I mean, that one, it went to five, you know, it's pretty good. Sounds like it.
Well, then I need a motion to approve the bus repair as presented or in discussed. Yes.
Rachel says we have three older buses than this one, and we just decommissioned a bus from nineteen ninety-nine. Nineteen ninety-nine.
What year was this one again?
Wasn't. I was gonna say. Because she was born in nineteen ninety-eight. I gotta write that down so I can put that in my. Okay, well, I need a motion then. Okay, Alicia, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chris. Okay, motion has been made in second to approve the bus repair as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried.
And before we get to the closed session, I just want to publicly recognize and thanks James Zabrowski for your statement. And one other note, um, I did receive from the Rashul Education Association. Um, they're a memo asking and their willingness to start to collect a bargain process. So we did receive that as well.
Okay.
Just a note to the board.
Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five one C for the purpose of discussing compensation of public employees over which the school board exercises jurisdiction. Okay, James, do I have a second? And, okay, um, seven forty-seven, all those in favor of going into closed session, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Hey, any abstentions? Okay, motion carried.